Commissioners for session, it's November 23rd, 2022 is 9:05 a.m. This is a hybrid meeting, we're in building one, room 280. Public workers who may follow along on the Thurston County YouTube channel. I'm Carolina Mejia, I'm the Chair of the Board, Vice Chair Ty Mensah in the boardroom. Commissioner Gary Edwards joining us via Zoom as well. And we have County Manager Ramiro Chavez in the boardroom and Assistant County Manager Robin Campbell joining us via Zoom, as well as other staff members. And we have members of the Nisqually Tribe joining us today and guests for our agenda topic, which is Nisqually Tribe Broadband Coverage Survey Briefing. And I see Mike and Paul on, so County Manager, am I passing it to them?
Thank you, just, this is, good morning. This is a follow-up to the partnership that we are having with the Nisqually Tribe related to the broadband project in Thurston County. And I think the last briefing that we had with the board was, where was the survey? And today you will hear the results of the survey, at least provide a perspective on the survey they have conducted as part of this project. So with that in mind, Paul, will you be taking the lead of this, or Mike?
I'll go ahead and take the lead.
Right, Paul has all the data.
So I've, thank you all for meeting with us. First off, I know we're all getting ready for a holiday weekend. And with that, I'll try to just jump into this and give you as much information as we can before we all develop a food coma over the next couple of days. I did send over a GIS map, and if it's all right, if I have the ability to share, I'll share my screen and we can kind of go through that together.
Yeah, you should have access to your screen.
It's on our screen, it's the maps there to your front.
But if not, I can share mine if you like, but you should be able to share yours.
Yeah, it says host disabled participant screen sharing.
Oh, okay, so let me see if I can share my screen.
I had some other data I was hoping to share if we can resolve that.
Yeah, I can probably make you the host of the meeting from the time.
If you want to make it bigger, the little third icon from the, okay.
Go ahead.
So this, I don't know where your layers is on this. If this is the file that I sent over, it should have a layers option for you to open up.
No, it was just a PDF.
Yeah, it's a PDF, GIS PDF with layers.
No, we only have the PDF showing, so how about if I tried to share you, give you the rights to share your screen, Paul?
That would be great, thank you.
That way Paul can share if, you know, we can take a couple of minutes for that.
Yep. Go ahead, Paul.
Says it's still disabled.
I just need to host, so maybe because we.
Notice I'm on here twice, so if you can make me a host on the one that says PW Video.
Oh, got it. So you're going to be a host, so you need to send me back, or you can probably host yourself to the PW Video.
Yeah, it's still saying that they. I think what's happened is I made, yeah, I only have the ability to share on a different computer. So if you give me a second, I'll go ahead and transfer the data over here and bring this up.
Does this coincide with our digital literacy learning?
Here we go.
Now we see your.
Okay, perfect, if everybody can see my screen, what I had sent over was a GIS layered map. So in here, we can go down to the Layers tab and click Layers here, and I'm able to take you through these one at a time. So we started off this project by conducting the internet speed tests, as you're all aware. And we've concluded that even though we're leaving it open, we're leaving the online version open for people to take. Feel there's no harm in continuing to collect data as long as people are willing to provide it. So we, we've done over 4,000 speed tests in Thurston County. And that is speed tests with full surveys and well over 3,000 of those were in person. So we feel like we did a good job at collecting real-time information. And the information that we collected showed a lot of consistency. So a lot of the providers were worried about speed tests because of their ability to capture problems at the residence premise. So in other words, access equipment issues that could slow down speeds. But for those of you that attended our broadband roundtable session, what we explained is that through this process, we actually wound up conducting, you know, digital literacy education. We were able to educate customers on the difference between their 2.4 and their 5 gigahertz frequencies on their access routers. And through that, we were able to even fix some device issues that customers had. Wasn't our intent when we set out, but it wound up being a couple of benefit. So with that, we'll start going through what we uncovered. I have on here what the state was defining as unserved. At the time that we started this, anything under 25 meg down by 3 meg up was considered unserved. That, that has now been changed and upgraded. Now the state defines anything under 100 meg by 20 meg up, that is now defined as unserved. Anything that is under 100 meg symmetrical, meaning 100 meg down by 100 meg up, is considered underserved. So this is a new revelation, revolution that kind of changes the scope of the survey that we conducted. However, there's still relevance as I walk through this with you. So these pins, while they're static on this page, we have address and survey data digitally recorded for each one of these locations. And so we have a KML file that we can zoom into each location with the address and the survey information on it. Tells us who the service provider was, what they're paying per month, what speed they're paying for and what they're receiving. So there's a lot of black dots on this page. You can basically see Thurston County's, the outline of the county with this. So that tells you there's a lot of issues. This was more than we expected to receive. Now granted, there is, some of these are going to reflect people that are paying for less than they have available. So we took that into consideration. So the next layer I'm going to turn on is the under 100 but over 25, which was by definition before underserved, but now this is just an additional layer of what is considered unserved. Why this is important to us is that funding is allocated on these criterias. And unserved is where we are able to capture the grant funding. And so as you can see, there's a lot of areas that you wouldn't have expected to see these. Even in Olympia itself, Lacey, with the new criteria of unserved, it opens up a whole lot of areas that we didn't have access to. Now I'm going to turn these, turn on the over 100. And you can see there's a lot of mixed bags in there. At the time, what we hadn't done, which I'm going to go back and do now with the new definitions, is there is a large majority of these green dots that are over 100 that do not meet the 20 meg up. In fact, most of these dots down in lower Thurston County, even the green ones, were just barely over 25. And they were not near the 20 up there, most of them were right around 35 by 8 meg in this whole area down below where you see green. When you get up into the metropolitan areas or the urban areas up here, they tended to be, we had a lot of service providers offering over 100 meg, but again, the upgrade was not anywhere near symmetrical. So unless that upgrade is symmetrical, they're still considered underserved. So we have a lot of work to do in Thurston County. And so what we decided to do was focus on the areas that had the highest congestion of unserved and underserved for this round of WSBO funding. And y'all may be familiar with the application that we're preparing to go to WSBO within the next month. As Jinnika's aware, the NOFO was released yesterday. There were some changes from our original, what we were originally told the grant would be. And so we were originally told that grant was going to be a ceiling of 25 million. And so we built a joint project between Pearson Thurston County based on that. And they have changed that ceiling since the release of the NOFO to 12 million. So we are doing some readjustments right now to bring those down to meet that level. And we can do another briefing with the county within the next week or two, if you're interested in seeing the revised scope of that particular grant. I'm going to turn these layers off for a second. And I'm going to put in the different layers that we've been funded already. So the Nisqually Tribe has already been funded, the curb route that leaves the Nisqually Tribe and heads over to Little Rock area. And then last year's round one of WSBO that takes off from Little Rock down into Upper Rochester. So this has been our initial line that we're building services off. We have started to assess the areas that were by definition last year as unserved. And we started doing pre-engineering on those routes. So everything that you're seeing on your map right now met last year's condition of unserved. And this is where all the black dots were and where the, let's just throw these. That gives you an idea of why we are doing that in the areas that we are. And we have, everything you see on your screen now, we have nearly completed the pre-engineering and budgets for. I'd say 90% of this, the rest we're still working on. And then we are moving on to the underserved areas. And everything you see here in yellow now is what was defined as underserved. But with the new criteria, all of this is unserved, it's in yellow. So again, I don't know if you guys can see that as very well, but again, there is a lot in Thurston County that needs to be addressed. The problem is continuity. We have a lot of pockets that have been missed by the service providers. So one thing the grants typically ask for is continuity between your funded, the area you're requesting funding for. And in some areas, that's difficult to do. So we really keyed in on initially taking care of everything that we can continue continuity with one network. The state has asked us to provide a five-year plan to them that shows that, you know, the tribe is in this for the long haul. And I think that's exactly what we're mapping out today with this. Is we're showing what we can continue to do by developing tiered levels. And that's what we're hoping to do with the county at this point. It's something that we had agreed to when we received your funding assistance, was that when we get to this point is to work with you on establishing some tiered levels of priority. So in other words, after this round of grant funding from WSBO, we need to identify what the highest priority is for our next round of funding that we go for. And we'd like to do that, you know, collaboratively with the county. And we're also working with the county BAT that has multiple stakeholders involved in that. And we'd like to have their input as well. But we really see that as the next stage in the process of where we're at today. So if any of you have trouble opening these layered maps that I sent, I did send some directions with that when I sent it over as well on how to do this. We've already contacted the Department of Commerce and let them know that we want to share this data with them from the speed tests. And they've put us in touch with somebody that is managing that for them. And we're waiting to hear back so that they can add this data to their state speed test surveys. We also, for lack of a better word, lobbied with the state to ensure that speed tests of this caliber were going to be accepted as acceptable proof of under and underserved areas. This is extremely important with the FCC broadband maps coming out. Because the state is only going to receive funding for the areas that align with those FCC maps as shown as underserved or unserved. And those apps are far from accurate. And so we need to be able to defend the areas that need funding so that the state can receive the funding it needs. And so we worked really effectively, I feel, with the state to share the case of how we did these speed tests and how they differ from what traditional speed tests are. You know, the fact that traditional speed tests are just an online click and it takes a snapshot of your, whatever device you're using, the speed that it's receiving. They can be ambiguous to a certain extent because it's only going to be as good as the device that you're using or the router or modem connection that you're using. And quite frankly, you could have multiple connections pulling data in the house at the same time, they could affect that. And so by us doing in-person surveys and educating the customer to turn off, you know, other things that they may have on the network, to try to do a direct LAN connection when they do their speed tests, and if they're unable to do that to utilize their 5 gigahertz, we received, we received far more accurate readings and we're able to sell that as such. A telling factor of that is that we don't have a lot of fluctuation in speeds in the areas that we've conducted tests in. So for an example, the area that we have selected for round two of WSBO, we, you'll see some mixed green dots in here. A lot of those are businesses and some were even satellite. But we have a very consistent testing process through this region. We did 10% of the selected area, so we zoomed in on that area more than others. And we had a consensus, quite telling consensus, that this area was unserved. And so that's why we selected that and we presented that to the state. I think it's really going to be beneficial reviewing their NOFO. And there, there's language in there that alludes to the fact that we were effective in presenting this speed test should be allowed to identify an area. So I think everything that we have done has been beneficial to the ends of what we're trying to do, which is go out and receive funding. But they actually wound up taking it a step further. And I think it's, these speed tests are going to help the state bring additional dollars through the lead funding to Thurston County. Without these speed tests, it would have been difficult for us to challenge what some of the service providers are doing. And I'm not going to get into that too much, other than to say that there is some wireless providers or cellular cellphone providers, that are claiming areas of coverage stating that they are covering those areas with qualifying speeds and they don't even provide service in that area. So we're going to be able to effectively negate some of those. We're going to have to contest them with the state on the state's behalf. And we're ready and willing, we've already spoke with WSU Extension College. They've requested that we assist them with some of this. So we're, we're going to be effectively assisting the state in receiving more dollars based on the help that you offered and funding for us to do this. So with that, that pretty much concludes the speed tests. We'll move on to another section, but I want to make sure, anybody has any questions on the speed tests, that'd be a great time to go over those.
Hi Paul, yes, it looks like Commissioner Edwards has his hand up, Commissioner Edwards, go ahead.
My question is, off to the east, we're, I mean, all through it, you have a lot of black. But over there, you've got a lot of, I don't know, fuzzier black or black lighter black, what's that about?
That's just a, when it's being transposed from GIS documents, layers over into this, it's just not coming up great. I think if I zoom in, they'll probably, may or may not. They are still, to answer your question, they're still meant to be solid black. It's just a, it's an issue with resolution.
Okay, I just didn't see it on the legend, thanks Paul.
Thank you, Commissioner Mensah, do you have any questions?
Paul, when you were in the middle of describing this, you used the term symmetrical, like it's not, it's showing this, but if it's not symmetrical, it doesn't matter, and I'm unfamiliar with what that means.
So symmetrical, symmetrical means the exact same up as it is down. So if you've got 100 meg requirement, it has to be 100 meg down, down speed and 100 meg up speed. So when you're, and to make it easier to understand, when you're downloading a video offline, you're using your download speed. When you are uploading a document to send in an email or such, you're using your upload speed. And so that's what symmetrical means, is that you have the same speed in both directions.
Okay, but you were describing, okay, I understand that now. But you were describing at the beginning, kind of like 25 up or in three down, is that what you were saying?
Yeah, when we got in, I believe the portion of the conversation you're referring to was that we have a lot of green dots in here that are over 100 meg, which if they were over 100 meg symmetrical, then they would be considered served. But we're seeing very little of that. And so what I'm going to do now, these definitions by state definition were just made new to me today. My last reading on this was under 25, 3 was considered unserved and under 100 meg by 20 was considered under. So now with these new definitions, I'm going to go back through these maps and we're going to take anything that is not 100 by 100 symmetrical. And we're going to classify that as underserved on here and everything over will be green. And you're going to see a different picture on here.
Got it, thank you, that's. God, thank you. That makes it really clear.
Okay, Paul.
Okay, so what I was gonna move on to, it's really something that's on my other screen here. So is there any way that I can stop sharing here and you can give me navigation on the screen that says P walk?
You, you, you hate Paul, uh, can you share, I stopped sharing your screen, but you, you are the host right now, so.
Yeah, I guess what I'm getting at is is I'm on this meeting twice. I have two computers on and the reason I did that was my primary data is on the other computer. Uh, so right now you have me as a host as Paul Walk, but there's another one on here that says Paul W. Video.
Yeah, let me.
I hate to complicate things.
Okay, you got it.
Okay. Okay. So this is our KML, uh, PMZ, Google Earth, um, imaging of what we've been working on. So this area over here is what we're getting ready to apply for, yeah, with WSBO round two. Now, we're having to tighten this up a little bit because of budget constraints. Um, we're starting with the budget itself and then we're gonna work into the uh, project. And we're, we're gonna have to downscale this a little bit. But this is everything that we have pre-engineered so far. And when I say the word pre-engineered, um, we've identified all the permits required. We've identified the private property areas um, involved in here. Um, everything you see with the red boxes, these are vaults um, that we need for the underground, everything in red is underground. The poles are all poles um, that are along this route. Uh, so we've gone out and surveyed everything in this particular run. The only thing left for this is formal engineering. And um, from what I understand, from what I read in the NOFO today, the uh, there's a ten percent match to this grant, um, but there is uh, there is some, we're, we're waiting for an answer back and for clarity, but I believe we can use the engineering, even the pre-engineering, possibly the surveys um, as an assistance in that. So does anybody have any questions on this particular application? And let me just turn on, oh, roads is on. See if I can. That's not wanting, probably have too much data running right now, need to upgrade my speed. It's not picking up the roads, but just for everybody's information, this is Rainier right here. And so all of this is southeast of Rainier. And this is Clear Lake. So there's a whole lot of mess in here and this is.
Paul, 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 that's, that's Lawrence Lake.
Lawrence Lake, yes.
Yeah.
Sorry. The uh, this is Consolidated Communications um, incumbent territory. And so we did have several, first off, we sent three letters to Consolidated Communications over the course of about four months that went unanswered. And and Mike uh, actually took a trip to their office in Yelm and tried knocking on the door and no one answered. It was locked. Um, so we finally tracked down a service technician and we got, got him to give ahold of his boss that we were wanting to communicate on this. And that worked and we wound up uh, receiving contact. And we had probably uh, shared about twenty emails and we had four meetings with them. And they were interested in being a uh, a LECE on this to provide services and ISP along with Astound. And at the last minute, um, they came back to us and said that uh, no, they're not interested in participating. Um, not sure why, why that changed, but it did. Um, so we have Astound um, still as our committed service provider for this entire region, which when we reviewed pricing from Consolidated versus Astound pricing, Astound pricing is actually better. Uh, so I don't think that that's a bad thing. Uh, hopefully, and has developed, um, you know, they'll jump on here and be able to provide some services as well. But that's where we stand on, on this particular project. We have a committed service provider letter from Astound um, to partner on this. Any questions on this portion?
Uh, yes.
Go ahead, sir.
Uh, Paul, you mentioned the ten percent match and uh, that your engineering and such could be a portion of that. I guess my question probably maybe for the county manager then, are we going to be expected to come up with any general fund money on this?
Uh, uh, Commissioner, uh, I don't believe so. I think you um, you set aside some ARPA funds to uh, uh, to support this project, so if there's any potential match, um, maybe coming from the ARPA funds allocation.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions?
Commissioner Mansour, any questions?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Okay, Paul, thank you.
So as I move out here, I'm just gonna take you to some other areas that we have worked through. And you'll see the, when I show you these, these are the areas that we have completed the pre-engineering on, which means we've surveyed everything, we've developed all the permits, we've created a budget um, with an engineer cost to construct this from soup to nuts, uh, for lack of a better term. And so this is what we have completed to date. We have others that we're in the middle of working on, but I didn't feel it was relevant to share with you things in progress. Uh, but this area here is uh, an area of tonight hotels build. Uh, it's, it's unfortunate, but the majority of tonight hotels area is considered unserved. Um, in fact, about ninety percent of it. And so, you know, they've asked us for a uh, a call to kind of go over how we might be able to work together. And we're very open to that. Um, and so we're, we're wanting to share this data with them and see what their plans are. And if there's any way we can assist them, um, or if they have plans to capture funding to do this, it's so great. Um, but anyway, this is an area that we have identified and uh, completed the pre-engineering. The other area is the Rochester area. We've already received funding for the upper Rochester area, so this is the lower Rochester area. And uh, we've created a budget for this, um, all surveyed and pre-engineered. And this, this one right here is under twelve million. I think this was right around nine million to do all of this. And this one up here for tonight hotel uh, area, it's coming in right around ten million to do that one. And then we selected an area up here. Only reason we picked this is when I showed you some of the areas before that were hard to uh, I, I told you that we needed to keep a continuity between our, our funding. And this one connects to what was received, what what Nisqually has already received funding to. And there are just some areas that stood out as uh, absolutely nothing there. So we were wanting to include that in a possible future joint grant with uh, with this Rochester area. Uh, but again, this is where we'll get together once we're, we conclude all this pre-engineering and the, and collectively decide what is the next one that we should be going after as a priority. Any questions on these?
Questions, Commissioner Edwards.
Uh, no, I don't have any more questions on this. Thank you.
Commissioner Mansour? Okay, thank you, Paul.
So what we're also working on in conjunction with the pre-engineering is we, working with emergency services uh, Thurston County. Uh, we've met with the, the fire department, uh, emergency services and the, and the police emergency services, their IT departments. And received some really good feedback on what they're looking for, um, that could assist them. Uh, it's going to be a little difficult to uh, to meet some of these needs because they're gonna be standalone projects. Uh, most of these emergency services have access to good internet. And uh, they just don't like the pricing or um, they're at, they're looking for a secondary provider and I don't know how much we'll be able to do that uh, regarding that. So we're gonna finish our assessment and then I'll write a brief on that along with some recommendations and then we can collectively uh, review how to, how to work on that end. Uh, but I know that was a priority for BEAD and a priority for the county and the stakeholders is to make sure that all the hospitals and emergency services uh, have adequate services in Thurston County. Any questions on that?
I'm not seeing any hands.
Okay, so I guess this briefing was primarily to let you know that the surveys had concluded and to share that data. And um, unfortunately, I didn't have the revised information on uh, what is under and unserved as of today before this meeting. Uh, but I will go back and reflect that on this map and reshare that with the group. I'll send it over prior to our next meeting, but uh, we can go over it in detail in our next meeting if uh, if everybody likes. And we're hoping to conclude the underserved, I'm sorry, unserved areas of Thurston County, the pre-engineering uh, sections within the next uh, couple of months to where we can present that as a concluded effort. So any questions on where we're at today versus where we're going?
Questions?
Uh, I might have just a quick one in fact.
Go ahead, Commissioner Edwards.
As you're going along, Paul, is uh, Jenica kind of up to speed on all this stuff?
So that's a good question. Jenica, are you up to speed on all this stuff?
Um, well, Paul and Mike and I have had uh, a lot of communication as this has gone forward. It does sound like there have been some changes um, with the WSBO grant uh, and what that application will look like. So I believe we'll continue to uh, have communication on how that evolves.
And we do meet monthly with uh, Thurston County BAT and that's an opportunity for us to go over things as well. Um, so I mean, we, we feel blessed to have Jenica where she is. She's been a ton of help.
Keep us in the right track, just so you know.
I missed something there.
Jenica keeps us on the right path, uh, communicate on a regular basis.
Okay, well, good, because uh, most.
We usually hear from one another at least once or twice a week.
Great. Most of what Paul's uh, the, the technical stuff is kind of Greek to me. And so I, I'm probably gonna be depending on Jenica quite a bit. Thank you.
All right, uh, that pretty much concludes everything that we had down uh, to share with uh, with the commissioners. So I guess if you don't have any further questions.
Okay.
I, I just have, I just have a good question when, when you're ready, Madam Chair.
Um, sure, Commissioner Mansour, do you have any questions, sir?
Um, no, go ahead and call him on your own.
Okay, county manager, go ahead.
Hey, 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 Paul, any uh, timeline as to when they revise this couple of work to meet the, the new uh, ceiling on the grant? Any? Cause that's, 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 that's essentially, it's almost fifty percent cost on what we were planning to begin with. So I'm just curious, the timing of the revising the scope of work. So I, I will be probably curious as to how much reduced that is. Or perhaps how much money, you know, the other partners will have to probably uh, contribute.
So what we're doing, you know, I will have a revised budget by end of next week. Um, so just to kind of reiterate that, I probably wasn't very clear. The first thing that we're doing is we're attacking the budget. And we're making sure that everything is real-time, today's bid rate. Luckily, we have construction companies that we work with on a daily basis. So making sure that all our costs are right where they need to be to still be prevailing, but as competitive as possible. Um, so that's the first place we're attacking. Um, and also we're able to take the, if things go the way that they sound like they're going, you know, we've met with Pierce County and Thurston County and Pierce has offered to pay for the engineering on their, their portion. And I believe you guys are working through that possibility at Thurston County. If we're able to remove that engineering budget, that's also going to uh, be able to cut that budget down. Uh, then what we'll do is if there's still more that we have to, which I can pretty much tell you, I attacked it yesterday. I was able to cut out about two point five million without affecting the uh, too much of the area. Um, so as I attack this, I'm gonna take the areas that uh, unfortunately, we're wanting to pass as many homes as possible, but I also have to make sure that we're effectively uh, serving the people with the worst service first. Uh, the other factor that I gotta take into consideration now is the uh, is, is the affordability of the region. So I have to look at the demographics and be able to decipher if there's a portion of this build where there is uh, uh, they meet that two hundred percent um, poverty level. I have to focus on that first because that's gonna be an area that WSBO wants us to focus on as well. So give me the long answer to your question is uh, I would say two weeks and we'll have a completely revised scope and budget for you to review.
Right, uh, yeah, and Jenica will be the conduit um, to get that information to us, so I appreciate it.
Okay. Uh, these, this, this grant is due on the seventeenth of January. Uh, so we have a little time and the good news is they're not reviewing any applications that come in until the eighteenth.
All right.
Okay, Commissioner Mansour, did you?
I think I'm okay.
Okay, so it is uh, nine forty-six. Someone pipe up?
No.
No, we, we, uh, we lost your video, we lost your audio there for a moment.
Oh, okay. Um, it is nine forty-seven PM. Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Paul, for joining us this morning. Uh, with that, we are adjourned.
Thank you, everyone. Happy holidays.